Did you get my email?
Yes, did you get mine?
I did.
Oh, good.
And so, yeah, I'll save up a spot for you. But as soon as you can get a hold of it would be sooner the better. But you don't need them expecting to trade us out.
Thank you very much.
You can just do it as soon as you get home, that would be good.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
Miss Jones, Mrs. Healy, Miss Trudy, it's nice to see you.
Good morning. I already said, "Thank you."
You know, it's a something.
What's going on in your commissioner room?
Uh, nothing. It's, uh, it just is too small for as many people as we have in there. It, uh, we don't want to take the fire hose.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, uh, this was an idea that-
So here we have Elmer, right?
Exactly, yes. All right, thank you, Ann. Uh, if we will call this meeting to order, could all join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome, everyone. It is September 9th. This is Broadwater County Commissioners' Meeting. I have a quick statement to read. Says, "Quiet, please," it's on your seats. The commission meeting is being recorded. Please do not engage inside conversations during the meeting, as this will interfere with the sound quality of the recordings. Individuals not complying with this requirement will be removed from the meeting. Individuals speaking out of turn without first being recognized by the commission chairperson will be removed from the meeting. Uh, also, with the interest of, uh, all the different recordings and the YouTube recording, if you could please state your name, if you have a comment, and wait to be recognized by the chair. So with that, we will start today's meeting, 10 o'clock, Commissioners' Community Update. Franklin.
We've had many meetings last few days.
Is that it?
Yep.
Okay. A couple of things. The make-up conference is, uh, the 23rd. We generally cancel that Monday meeting to attend the conference, so with your agreement, we'll do the same. Okay. I also had, uh, just working meetings this week, uh, nothing scheduled. I did attend the city council, and, uh, they did also agree to sign the inter-local agreement, so that they will be sharing the services of the county attorney, has the city attorney. And, uh, the other order of business, I will bring up a bit later. So what we'll do is seven after ten. We'll go ahead and just do a little bit of mail for a few minutes until, uh, Brian. First, we have minutes, September 3rd and September 5th, and these were both sent to you, I believe, on Wednesday of this past week. Thursday of this past week. Thanks, Ann.
They moved except the minutes of, uh, September 5th and September 3rd.
I'll second the motion, as we're moving second, except the minutes of September 3 and 5, 2013. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries. All right, thank you, Ann. We have the approved claims from last week, dated 9/4/2013, in the amount of $12,798.76.
I'm going to pay the claims for 10/17 for an amount of $12,780.76.
All right, I'll second the motion, as we're moving second, to pay the approved claims of 9/4/2013 in the amount of $12,798.76. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, um, just for mail, we have a couple of water studies. Um, Tim Rouser is the city manager, and, uh, he did some water studies on the brown water that was brought to us not too long ago, and, uh, it is for E. coli and chloroform, completely and totally safe with, uh, no traces, uh, all traces are absent. That was probably the result of a ruptured line, uh, just a sprinkling line. Uh, City of Whitefish is looking for a wastewater discharge permit. Anyone that's interested? All right, and, pretty weak or quiet mail day, we have one claim that needs a duplicate signature to keep the checks and balances, and that is for the explorer getting some work done. Thank you. All right, Brian, we are three minutes early, but if you would like to come up and join us, that would be great. We could start a little early.
Sure.
Our agenda stays, times are subject to change.
Well. For the record, I'm Brian Holm, Department Supervisor of the Solid Waste Department, and this is my monthly update. We've had a interesting run from the Solid Waste Department, to say the least. We've had some equipment issues, uh, we've had some tire issues, we've had a lot of things go on that have, uh, made it difficult to handle the trash, but not impossible. Got a transmission problem with our semi that hauls from the transfer station to landfill that we hope to get addressed in the next week or so. We're still able to run the truck, it's just we don't have a high speed on our transmission, so it takes a little longer to tune and throw. But, um, that should be able to be taken care of fairly quickly, once we get everything in place to do it.
Who'd they go, who'd fix that?
Saltstones.
Yeah.
The, uh, the other issue we had was a, we put new tires on our canister truck in June. One of those blew out. Well, didn't blow out, it still held later, but the tread came off, the cap came off the tread. So it should be under warranty. Mark Sperrigan's looking at that, purchased them through Zip's Tires, so he said they should replace it without a problem. Other things, there's been a lot of trash. It's been busy. The, uh, with the recent storms we've had, we've had an increase in the trees. Definitely seen a lot of people taking trees down, uh, and we've had those collected at the transfer station. The other big items that we've discussed in the last month is cardboard, the need for finding a location for a cardboard baler. Currently, the baler is inoperable. We had to move it out of the building that it was in. It's, um, sitting at an undisclosed location outside. We can't bale any cardboard in it. What we've done as the Solid Waste Board, and we have their recommendation, is to, um, pursue the Perry Building. I've talked with Perrys, they have listed it with a realtor, I've talked with that realtor. They are willing to do a contract for deed for that building. The stipulation on that is, uh, a 25% down, and then it needs to be paid off within 10 years, is their primary stipulations. That would mean it would be about a, a $50,000 upfront cost to get in the building. But we could be in the cardboard baling business again in probably about a day with, um, some help from an electrician to wire that thing in, and, um, it would, uh, it would put us in the cardboard baling business as the Department of Solid Waste. But, so I think the, the decision that needs to be made is if Broadwater County wants to get into the recycling business. The Solid Waste Board says yes, we do. The words I've heard from the people I've talked to on the street are, uh, in the last couple of years since I've had this job is, uh, I've never had anyone ask me why we recycle in Broadwater County, but I've had a lot of people ask me why we don't do more. They would like to see recycling options at the rural canister sites, um, like Rakersburg, Tosh, and Winston. We do have some of them now, um, in Bradock. The, uh, those are the concerns that I've heard. So I think that the citizens are, are willing to, to do what it needs to take to keep the recycling program going. What it would take from the county side is the purchase of a building, um, or the construction of a building, uh, and probably an additional person, which I've started the ball rolling on that, um, aspect of it, to get another person on staff that, um, could take care of the recycling effort. If we don't take over the recycling, there's still plenty of work for them to do. I'm not too worried about that, so. I did talk with Great West Engineering to look at some options that we had, discussed at the Solid Waste Board meeting. They gave me a proposal to do those, to look at, uh, what their scope would be, to look at the, the existing Townsend Marine building, which has, would be vacant, um, when the Townsend Marine moves over to the, you know, the old Strong and Bradley pro auto building there. They would look at Perry Building, they would look at the, the building that was donated to the county from the Forest Service, I believe, and they would look at the construction of the new facility down by an existing canister site. In looking at this further, and further discussions with the Solid Waste Board, I don't know if that level of review is necessary. I think we're down to basically two options. One is, don't do anything, and we're out of the cardboard business, and the other is the Perry Building, and we're in the cardboard business. I could talk with Great West Engineering and have them revise their scope to do the, uh, the environmental assessment of that property. You know, the preliminary work I've done, I don't see any, um, potential problems with that property. There's no record of any tanks that are buried on that facility in the DEQ database. There's, you know, and with the, the work that's been done in Townsend along Front Street, I would think that property would have been looked at in that timeframe when they redid the line through, uh, because of existing leaks that were in town. There's no record of that happening, so I think a, a site assessment would be fairly easy and, and simple to get accomplished. So I guess what I'm looking at today is the possible decision from the commission on whether we move forward with pursuing negotiations with the Perrys and trying to get something resolved about the cardboard building, so.
Franklin, do you have any-
What do you find out on the lease terms and stuff?
They would lease it. I don't know what the price of the lease would be. Of course, they would rather sell it to us. And I think there's pros to that. I know the county, um, you know, there's, there's other departments in the county that would be willing to, to help out with that aspect of it, too. The, uh, you know, I, I didn't get a, a monthly lease price from the, the owners, but, you know, their preferred option is to sell it. The problem we run into at the lease is it would still stay on the market, somebody could come in and buy it out from under us, and we'd be in the same boat right now. But if we put it under a contract for deed or outright purchase of property, uh, we've got a long-term location for bailing tar.
So what happens if, uh, you're paying that lease for a couple of years, say five years, and then it's sold five years down the road? What happens to all that money you paid in the lease?
It's gone.
Just lost?
Yeah, just a lease deal.
The other departments are, what, weed and mosquito?
Yes.
Any others?
That's the only ones I know of that are, that are looking for space. And there's plenty of space in that building to accommodate them, and we wouldn't need the entire building to accommodate.
And Tom is the Chair of the Solid Waste Board. Do you have any comments you want to add to what Brian shared?
Hello, my name is Tom Austin, I'm on the Solid Waste Board. Uh, I look at recycling sort of like generational thing with seatbelts. My parents didn't have seatbelts. I started using them like grandchildren won't even start the car until they put them on. I look at recycling as the same option as, 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 we are understanding that we need to recycle those things we can reuse, and so I concur with Brian, and we're going to turn to him, to take a very serious look and not destroy what was started by Grant by getting the cardboard baler. We needed a place, we need a place for it, and, uh, at times, the solid waste employees, you know, they take comp time, and they over time, but it's difficult for them at times to take comp time when there's still work to be done. So there are times we need to have a third person, and this sort of works into it. And when you look at recycling, you know, you can't look at this price of what you get for the product that you're recycling, but, but also you're extending the lifespan of the, uh, landfill, and you're, and you're saving the tipping fees, not the total tipping fee, because you still have the labor involved, but you save the tonnage that you would pay to Tri-County, that doesn't go to Tri-County by recycling. So that's why the board is, I know that the prior supervisor was all for recycling, but he didn't want to count to be involved, but I think things have changed over a period of time. We need to take, take a serious look at keeping this recycling effort going in the county. Thank you.
Thank you very much. How about the time it takes to drive Helena with a, a load for tipping at Helena? Um, how much time does that take, you guys?
A trip to the landfill is about two hours.
Okay.
Round trip, hour and 45 minutes.
Do you have any idea how many trips are saved by taking those things out of the stream?
Well, we currently, we recycle about 100 tons of cardboard a year. That's about two semi-loads of trash. I don't know, I mean, big loads. There's about, oh, four semi-loads of trash. They're about 25 tons apiece. So four trips, um, eight hours a day worth of time, just not hauling recyclable material to the landfill, cardboard. We also pull out some plastic and that kind of thing, so. And there's, uh, there's a diversion savings there also, so.
Winter, and your truck, too, might be involved in that. Um, I saw Steve actually working on Saturday, so I'm sure you're aware of that, but just so that you folks know, um, he took his Saturday to work on the trash.
Yeah, we, uh, we alternate weekends in the summer. Towards the winter, we don't typically have to work on the weekend, but you and I schedule that out where somebody's around to manage the trash on the weekends, so. We run a seven-day operation with two people, and it's, uh, kind of wears on you at times.
Yeah. Well, any further questions or comments, Franklin?
Yeah, as far as recycling, I think everybody's for it. I, I'd like to see recycling, too. I don't think the county should be involved in it at all. I think it, uh, should be set up. There's more and more private people are getting into it. That's what I mean, I thought we should get that fellow from, um, Four Corners over here to visit with us.
He's been in and out. He's kind of a hard guy to track down, but, um-
I think if we had everything's, uh, were him or another private officer come in and handle it, and we just have the area where they could have their whatever. Now, he wouldn't bail here, he'd haul everything over there and do the baling there, as far as cardboard goes, at this point, uh, but if there was a-
It would cost us- It would cost us something to do that.
So a big bribe on the top-
He's not going to do it for free.
Right, it'd probably be a toss-up of us hauling it to the landfill, or him, or paying him to haul it to his place. But the thing is, we'd, we would be free from it. I mean, uh, germs, everything else, that's why I say, I think the county should just be free of it, and I'm sure that somebody would pick that up if he wanted it. And, and there again, the cost would be, uh, the amount, not that we're saving anything, but probably a very human-type thing, paying him to haul it, or from what I understood at the meeting, it, where we could haul it to, if we had extra time, we could do the hauling to the-
So, in your mind, you would rather take those jobs to Gallant County than keep them in Broadwater County, or that job that would be created?
Yeah, we're, the county wouldn't have to be involved in it at all. It isn't that-
We're involved with it now.
And the thing is, is, uh, I, I feel the county should, should be in it. I mean, just one of those things that, you know-
What are you willing to subsidize that program to have it done now?
Well, that's why we need some information, like from that fellow. I don't know if there's any other recycler, he's pretty big, I understand, he, he does all the, he also in the park, and I think he does white sulfur, and, uh, a big area. I just got to talk to that one time, we, we just had a short-
It costs us about $80 an hour to have him come down here with a truck to haul plastic. It would be the same thing with cardboard. If you're not baling it, it's more trips, um, so we can run our truck at about half that cost.
So it'd be cheaper if we hauled it down there, then? Which, I guess, before we step in and think we should, uh, get involved and find out what he would offer and what, what the cost would be.
If we bail it, we get a better price for our cardboard, and we ship it in the snow at the front.
And then again, what we're talking about, roughly, four more loads a year to the landfill. But like I, I think it's good to get, to get it recycled, but I think there'd be somebody that could, uh, could do it, perhaps in the county.
BCDC attempted to get somebody to take it over, uh, when they created, the grant was done in, what, 2009? Nobody stepped forward. John Hawn is the only one that put out any interest in it at all.
I realize that. Well, at that time, I don't know if this fellow's even in business, then.
He's, he's reading Rome, I know, in the last year or two. But I think we should have a visit with him and see what, uh, what all the options are.
The other thing you had mentioned is, uh, if we have extra time, how much extra time do you and Steve have to go ahead and take the loads to Four Seasons, uh, for him to work for $80 an hour?
We probably would have some time on a Friday to make a trip down there. We'd haul one can at a time.
And then we go to Belgrade?
Yeah.
So you're talking about gas, wear and tear on the vehicle, um, and then $80 an hour for Four Seasons?
Probably just as well have him haul, actually, save the wear and tear on ours. I mean, it's just something to have decided, and the way, a little bit of talk to him, it could be either way, if we wanted to haul a load over, we could, or, or not, he'd be picking it up.
I know on the plastic side, um, he comes down and, and drops cans off for plastic, we load them, um, with John Hawn loads them with our assistance. And once you pay the freight, uh, John gets a few dollars for plastic. If we took that over, I would look to get in a compactor box for plastic, so we could haul more plastic with a single trip. Probably end up making two, maybe three trips a year with plastic. That would increase the revenue of that, of that product. Because we compacted into a 30-yard canister with a backhoe, and it doesn't compact very well. It takes a, you know, they only get four or 5,000 pounds of plastic in two canisters. We can get at least that much in one canister pretty easily.
So, Brian, moving away a little bit from the recycling end of this, which is a, a big portion of this, however, the other portion is, uh, you're looking at the building in town, closer to the Cedar Canister Site. What are some of the reasons that you're looking at the building in the first place? Certainly not only with the cardboard.
It would give us a place to store our equipment, out of the weather. Uh, currently, we have our backhoe setting outside. That is, in the wintertime, that's plugged in 24/7. It, uh, it runs us, I think it's run us up to maybe $100 a month, if that plugged in in the wintertime. We would be able to park it inside, where it would at least be out of the weather, save wear and tear on that piece of equipment. We'd have room to store, you know, oil for our backhoe and, and other items that we use at the canister site down here that we don't have space for. If you have space, you'll fill it. And I know the weed department, they have needs, and they'd like to have to take care of, too. Keeping their equipment out of the weather in the winters is helpful, saves cost of repairs in the spring, and same with the mosquito folks.
I don't know if you're aware of this, but the mosquito truck was hit a couple of times where it has been parked in past years. Just, it's just too crowded. What that's going to equate to is another department having to spend more money on something that could have lasted longer if it had been able to be more properly cared for, which is, is nothing against the mosquito district, it's just we're laughing around. The, the correct process would be to have a public hearing, a public meeting on this? Get public input? Do you have an aversion to having a public meeting, so that we can hear from the public to address any of this issue?
Well, I think we should.
Okay.
We could have Dave Levert from Four Corners come to that public meeting, if he has a little notice of when it is, I'm sure he can arrange it.
I'd like John Hawn, too.
And answer those questions about what it would take from his side of things to, to run our recycling program.
That would be great, get some answers. So do you, gentlemen, want to do an evening public meeting, or do you want to do one during the commission meeting?
Evening's much better for us.
I think evening would probably work best. I think evening would probably work best.
Okay, do you want to...
I'd do an evening.
Okay. You want to do your regular Tuesday or would you like to pick a day and... Would you like to talk to Dave and get back to us and we can then schedule it? I should say Dave, Dave and John and, and Tim as well?
That might be helpful.
Okay.
Get a couple, two, three different dates out, you know, that they can make it and then try to get it worked out.
And before we, we close this, there's a hand over here, but Tom, do you have any further comments?
No, I don't.
Okay. All right. Um, are you, uh, ready to hear from the public, Brian?
Sure.
All right. Tim?
I'm Chair Tim Rabinoff. Uh, just in the interest of fiscal responsibility, as you move forward to this public hearing meeting, slash whatever you want to call it, I appreciate going that direction as a taxpayer. It's important, Brian, that, that we don't just give a presentation of the desired. I think it's important to have the cost analysis or, or comparison is a better word for it. As you mentioned, the building that was donated by the Forest Service, uh, as an option, building on at the Cedar Street facility and then also the cost of those, uh, other subsidies that are going into the current program. Now, I think it's important to have the people and the taxpayers know of, of all of those different variables when, when you get down to the bottom line. And that would make it a lot easier to, um, have the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other thoughts or comments?
Well, um, hearing that, do we want to proceed with this proposal from Great West Engineering to explore those options? They would do it on a time of cost of materials basis up to sixty-five hundred bucks to do those, the evaluation of those different options?
Uh, there's some issues with the Forest Service building. We have a quote already from them and I don't have it with me. Uh, we're looking at quite a hefty amount to use that. New construction, we know is going to be a bit more, but of course, it would be built soon. Towns and Marina is right on Front Street, probably not a good place for a county shot. Uh, that's prime business location. So, I guess that being said, uh, you know, there's, there's a potential of two there. Is new construction better or is the Perry Building better? If the Forest Service, we have the, just the steel, but what we would have to do in order to make that work is astronomical. Again, I don't have the, the quote, but we could certainly...
The engineer I talked with, um, we looked at that building and his recommendation was scrap it and use that money to build something else or to purchase something else. He said, "There's no way you could reuse the, the existing sheeting." He said, "Finding somebody that knows how to build a building like that or rebuild a building like that is going to be difficult." Especially when it has to be put out for public bid. A lot of contractors, um, will not bid public projects like that just because prevailing wage, all that kind of stuff. Adds cost to their building. They can give you a price to build a building, but they don't consider prevailing wage in that. So, if that is what we want to do, um, that would be the signature from you guys to engage Great West to tear this down. It would be far less than the sixty-five hundred dollars, but it would at least give us something to look at at a public meeting.
What do you and your board think about that? And Franklin, do you have any comments about that option?
Okay, the only three things they're gonna do is, uh, the price of a new building, right? And the Towns and Marina building.
No, we could scratch out Towns and Marina building.
Right.
Because of the location and logistics just aren't good.
I think that, like, the board would be pretty much...
We'd look at the Perry Building and the construction of a new facility. And we could have them throw in the construction of it or reconstruction of the Forest Service building, but that's going to be in the same ballpark as building, building, I think.
Yeah, only more costly and less efficient.
There are issues with that area down there being, it's on borderline of a floodplain. So, the site prep and that kind of thing would take a little more than just hauling in some dirt and backfilling. But that's the kind of thing that we would put together. And they would give us cost estimates.
Possibility on that, that was, uh, Gulf Tech-type, uh, school of classes that put buildings up. I don't know if I was ever looked at or not.
I don't know. I just don't know the answer to that. Whether they'd want to get involved with something like that or not, I don't know.
Because as far as the, the sheeting for the size, uh, because I never looked at it closer. I'd say you just forget, scrap that part of the idea. But all that red iron, all that steel is, is pretty expensive anymore. And I, there'd be a, a big savings. And that's the part a person could use.
You're talking about recycling it with the...
No, 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 putting up this building.
But I think you'd spend more time and money figuring out how it went together than you would if you bought a new package building and set it up.
Yeah, I thought he had the, the plans there and I haven't really get back to him on it. But somebody's in that type of business, the, the red iron part, I, I don't see where it'd be, uh, too difficult to figure out.
I'm not a building builder.
Yeah, well, I'm not on, I should, on the, on the steel buildings. But I think, uh, I mean, it's sure worth looking at because, uh, I'll, I'll give you, I have an example. Let's take the Columbia Building, uh, grain bin that I tossed in there a few years ago. I did some work there for this one outfit and he was moving them back to Minnesota. And I says, "My gosh," I says, "Why would they do that?" He said, "The price of steel's so high anymore. They could come over here, take those buildings down, re, put them back up there in Minnesota cheaper. They could buy new ones."
If you're the one that tears them down and you're the one that puts them together, that works pretty well. But I don't know who tore this building down.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know what they did with the bolts and the pieces and the parts. I don't know if everything's there. That's the thing you run into with that.
And on that, I don't know, door thing like that, and it wouldn't be, that's about three-sided buildings would actually be enough for storage.
So, it sounds to me what you would like to do is see the study moved forward, but include the Perry new construction and the Forest Service building?
And that's, they, they included that in their proposal. The only thing we would have to cross off is the Towns and Marina building, yes.
The safety issue of driving onto the highway, I think with the equipment too is another thing that needs to be used to X-out Towns and Marina.
But in the, you know, every day we study this, it's more cardboard than we're not bailing.
Right.
And, um, we, in the short term, we can work with Dave Levert and haul cans down to his facility and have them brought back. Long-term, that isn't going to work.
Let me think about, I don't know, can he furnish you the canisters or if we have initially get our own canisters for that, uh, cardboard?
We have cardboard canisters now. We have them. And what we would do is we'd get a couple of them full, he'd come down and haul them down and round-trip them for us. I don't know what that's costing. At least eighty-five dollars an hour for his truck. That cuts you there.
Cardboard.
Price.
Right, hundred sixty, hundred seventy dollars.
Because we're not going to give top dollar for the cardboard because it's unbailed. He's going to have to bail it, so we might end up losing money on that cardboard. I don't know.
It could be an expense instead of a revenue.
Well, either way, at least we're getting rid of it rather than going to the landfill with it. But, uh, it, it is a cost either way for us, so...
It could be revenue for us if we get it our own. If we bail it, it's a revenue source.
It's a revenue, but it isn't paying any money though. You said...
That's what revenue is.
Roughly, well, I know it roughly, uh, that hundred ton, I think we figured that, I mean, it was seven thousand dollars of the cardboard. Roughly was, you know, uh, that's not much revenue there for, for that amount of work that'd be done with it. That's why I say if somebody could come in and, and handle it, that's what we'd do.
I'm sure we could find somebody to haul our trash to and that would save us a lot of money. I don't think it'd do it at ten dollars and sixty-seven cents a month for the cost people now, so...
Well, we've got to look into these different options. And I think the main thing is just to have, uh, this fellow, he agrees there to lay out...
You have to remember that he's in the business to recycle. It's, yeah, we can have him come talk to us and he can give us numbers and, and that kind of thing, but, um, if that's what you want to proceed, I still need to find out about Great West Engineering if we want to have them pull the numbers together for those building stores.
What's their timeline? Do they mention anything?
They could get it done fairly quick.
Okay.
Um, you know, I don't know if they put a time in that proposal.
There's a couple of, of, um, things for you to remember with Great West is last time they came in and did an, an analyzation of your facility and your operation, they charged you far less than they quoted.
Right.
Um, they are timely. And the other thing is, is there's an awful lot of questions that we just don't have answers to. Franklin's brought up a good number as far as the Forest Service building. Uh, we need a professional answer so that we can actually hang our hat on that either way. And I think it wouldn't hurt us to have an analysis of new construction and Perry building. So, I guess I would, uh, concur with your earlier support of, of moving forward with an analysis of, of the three options.
We better put a top dollar amount on it or...
They've already done that.
There it is. Not to exceed sixty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah, we all know we don't go that much. That's it.
You get what you pay for.
We just, yeah, we just need some, um...
There's a little bit of...
Figures there. Uh, maybe we wouldn't have to go that much, sorry. It sounded a lot to just have some figures out. There are actions, estimates, there's nothing they're going to have to stand behind as long as they give us some estimates.
No, they're, they're engineering estimates. They're within twenty-five percent of being accurate. Wouldn't be my guess.
Twenty-five percent?
They're also not going to put their signature and their stamp on something that says we're not standing behind this.
Nothing should be done. It'd be just strictly, strictly an estimate.
For what they're doing, that's probably not a bad price. Again, last time they gave an eleven thousand dollar quote and came in at eight. Is that right?
Considerably less than what they're... You know, they, when they bid a project, they bid it for worst-case scenario. And then they actually get down to do it where if it doesn't take a lot of time, you say, right?
If a study like this too can save us fifty thousand dollars by going around or realizing something we haven't known before, to me, sixty-five hundred is, is an investment that can keep us from making a mistake. It's, we in your budget, it is, uh, you know...
We could make a shift in the budget.
Yeah. Uh, so we, it's not necessarily something we need to vote on, uh, but we should agree on signing it.
I just need a signature.
Okay. Do you agree to this?
If you've been working on your budget okay, I'd go wrong, but we'll make it work.
Okay. But the record shows that, um, we do have a, an unanimous agreement to pursue, uh, this contract to get an analysis from, analysis from Great West Engineering.
I think there's two signatures there, so...
All right. And Tim, did you have a follow-up question?
Well, I didn't, I'm sure, but if you've adopted it, it's moot now, but I will go ahead and say this anyway. It doesn't make a lot of sense to me to spend sixty-five hundred dollars to, for somewhere in that area to do this when you're premature really and you're just really looking for requests for proposals on comparison. You don't, you go to the Realtor and you know what that cost is without going to an engineering firm and you can go ahead and get bids for a new building, um, and then you can go from there. I, I don't understand the rationale for, for spending that money personally.
Mr. Franklin?
Yeah, um, I have a question. Is that Forest Service building, is that already demolished? It's already torn down, so the iron is just laying on the ground?
It has been for years.
And maybe parts are there and maybe they aren't. And I certainly disagree with Tim and his proposal, his idea. I think you have to have all the knowledge you can fit in your little brain before you make these decisions. Otherwise, we'd go at all half a car.
Thank you. I agree.
Just to, to clarify things a little bit, the Solid Waste Board did approach local vendors and got some cost estimates to build pole barn-type buildings. And the problem you run into with that is when you go to a public project, it has to go out for bid. A lot of local vendors will not bid a publicly-run project because you have to pay Davis Bacon wages. You have to look a lot at, a lot of expense that they don't typically have to run in their projects. So, you know, yeah, I'd like to use local vendors as much as we can, but they may choose not to bid this when it goes out to bid. Then we're, we get what we get. And Great West is, is familiar with that. They understand that process. They will take this all the way up to a bid package if we want. And that's, that's what we need. We need to know what we want to build before we can put it out for bid, so...
If you don't know where you're going, then you really get you there. Very wise woman has said that. Um, any other public comment on this issue? All right, Brian, if you would, go ahead.
How do I do the contact person with him when I'm looking at that, uh, Forest Service building? I like to be there with him. I've never, I've seen it there, but I never have looked at it closely. Maybe I changed my mind and maybe it, uh, I could be convinced to someone else. I mean, I'd just like to have some input on that.
Sure.
And if you'd get back to us when you guys want to have your public meeting, uh, we will go ahead and help with advertising and, uh, location, whatever you need from us.
Okay.
All right.
Sounds good. I think that's all I got.
All right. Thank you very much.
See you later this afternoon.
That sounds good.
Okay.
Until then, have a good day.
Thanks.
All right. We are at ten forty-five. Uh, is Judy here? Let's see Judy. All right. Uh, we have, um, next, the fiscal year fourteen county budget. And we will be having a department head meeting a little bit later today on the same subject. So, uh, glad that some of you are here now. Franklin, do you have your budget paperwork with you?
Stuff like that Friday.
Uh, while Franklin is pulling that out, I'll just bring, um, some of you up to speed. The, the budget needs to be done in two different steps, uh, and this is per MCA. The first step is to adopt the overall budget and that is set the mills. The mills for special districts voted for, levees, school, the city and the county. The floating mills are adopted and that's what funds all three of your departments as well as, uh, Fair, Museum, um, et cetera. Road and Solid Waste are both special districts or enterprise funds. They don't use the same floating mills, so... Um, we have adopted that portion of the bill, the budget, and we did that last week. So, now what we're working on is essentially just solidifying where those floating mills will go. We have a hundred and seven point eight-eight floating mills and those will, uh, be disseminated between, um, Fair, let's see, General Fund, Weed, Fair, the airport, uh, the library, ambulance, senior citizens' mills and transportation, extension, public safety, the detention center, the museum, search and rescue and general fund, which takes in, uh, the commissioner's budget, the law library, justice court, finance, audit, accounting and payroll, computers, elect, elections, personnel, clerk recorder, county attorney, maintenance, county service personnel, fire, the E S coordinator, uh, coroner, coroner, public health, board of health, environmental health, mental health... mental health, miscellaneous, county attorney investigator, which is zero, we don't have that position anymore. And that is, that is it. So what we did at first blush is we actually did things opposite of previous years. In previous years, what we would do is we would ask our department heads to put together a budget, kind of a wish list in June-ish. They would put down what they want, what they would like to have, kind of the J C Penney's catalog list that you did as a kid before Christmas. Then we would find out a couple of months later what the valuations are and we would try as best as we could to apply those valuations to the wish list. Then we would try and plug in everything after that. What most counties do and what we've adopted this year is the other direction, and that is to start with the mills. It makes your department heads more partners with the rest of the county. By starting with the mills, what we did is there was an inflationary increase of one point oh three percent and those mills, that increase was added to the floating mills, one oh seven point eight eight, and then that was disseminated across the different departments. So each department saw a little bit of a bump from that inflation. Now, keep in mind, the inflation of the mills, the increase in valuation, does not equate to taxpayers paying more into the tax system. What it means, the number one piece of the formula is population and business growth. So when you have more population and business growth, what it means is more people are paying in to that county tax bucket. And essentially, we actually have from the audit that individuals, businesses are paying less. We vote in more mills. There's different formulas that, A is different because it's also based on production. Value of home, if it goes up, then the taxes go up. But the actual taxes, if everyone's, if everything stayed even, would actually go down for individuals when valuations go up. And that's why growth is healthy. So we looked at a couple of things, and one is just taking each of those departments that take floating mills and adding that one point oh three percent. And then what we did is we looked at the revenue expenditures and came up with a formula just by adding the numbers. That's it, just the numbers, and came up with what looks like a really healthy budget overall. So what you have there on your sheet Franklin is, starting with, is your first page Weed? I changed my order a little bit.
Solid Waste was first one.
Solid Waste wouldn't be-
I know, I mean, that's, that was on top here.
Is that General Fund or All Purpose Fund? We can look at that one first.
Which one you want?
Okay, your totals are right on the top, right there.
This is Road here.
Okay, you, your All Purpose Fund is the General Fund and it's to your left. You want to start with that one, Ken, or you can, what I'll do is just kind of walk you through what you're looking at. And as you go through this, you'll probably change the order to fit how your brain works as well. What you see there, under the title, you have the different years, fiscal year eleven, twelve, thirteen, budget thirteen actual, that's the true numbers that came in, and then the budget proposed for two thousand and fourteen. Underneath, All Purpose Fund, you see revenues. And then the list, list just to the right of that is just what your different sources of revenue are. Taxes, that's property taxes, licenses and permits, intergovernmental transfers, that would be something like the inter-local agreement between the sheriff's office and the county attorney's office, D E S. And changes in charges for services, fines and forfeitures, miscellaneous, and then interest, earnings. And then it all adds up to what you see on the far right there in bold, that is the total revenue. So then underneath revenues, you have expenditures, and those are just general and they're by department. And so what you have is personnel, operations, fixed charges, operating transfers, and capital. And you have subtotals. Do you see all that?
Yeah.
Okay. So on page four, what you have is your total expenditures. And that is in bold. And underneath it, it says excess of revenues over expenditures or deficiency of revenues under expenditures. What you do is you subtract your expenditures from your revenue and you come up with that number. Then the beginning cash or operating cash, that's what we discussed last week, and that is your ending cash balance from where you see actual fiscal year thirteen. That is actually the beginning cash or operating cash. You add those two numbers and you come up with what is here is six fifty-five, six fifty-two. And what that should be is thirty-three percent of your total expenditures. Okay, and that has been done for every single fund. And this sheet that you have is looking at last year's mills given to the General Fund plus one point oh three percent, which is that inflationary increase. Any questions on that part?
Oh, we gotta use that on each individual?
Yep, it's been done for every single department.
Okay, which one was the one you said? The airport, is that what you said?
Airport is one. Weed, you might want to star them because there's someone in there that aren't, and that will help you have a list. So Weed. Or if you want to read off your list, I can tell you yes or no, that would be easier.
All right, so I'm looking at Weed. We roll the shape again.
Okay, why don't you turn back to your first page Franklin, and you can read them to me and I'll tell you if they are part of floating mills calculation.
But we gotta go on each individual?
Exactly. But Weed won't be working out enterprise fund, grants-
No.
And those are all in your stack. So what we need to do is look at floating mills first. Because that's really the only one we have any authority over. The others are set. They're set by the state.
I think we're going just backwards. But go ahead.
So what do you have there on that page? What two funds are you looking at?
Well, that's Road. We don't have to wait for it.
You have two there?
Hmm? No, this is Road.
That's Road Fund?
Right.
And Bridge. So what's, those are what you, those are not included, right? So what do you have next, on the next page?
Oh, here's Weed, actually.
Okay. Weed is a different monster. By law, the citizens about, seven years ago? Two thousand and six, voted for an additional five mills for Weed.
Right, yeah.
So that's set. That is not included here. What we're working with there will be adding one point six mills from the floating mills. Where we come up with the one point six is from MCA seven dash twenty-two dash two one four two?
Yep.
And it states, would, do you have it there? Would you read it Scott? Just the line that talks about the one point six mills?
Seven twenty-two, twenty-one, forty-two, section A, appropriating money from any source in an amount not less than one hundred thousand dollars or an amount equivalent to one point six mills levied upon the taxable value of all property.
Thank you very much. So what that says is Weed has to be funded at one point six, one hundred thousand-
Plus the five.
Plus the five, right. So Weed, for our purposes, with the floating mills, one point six. The next one you have there is, is that predatory animals?
Yeah.
Okay, that's not. So just Weed. That's set by the state. Predatory animals is.
Weed. Well, that's a maybe one. And this is a cattle.
Okay, you have two there as well. I don't remember what the second one is.
We'll get back to it. Fair would be the next one.
Yep, that bears included.
Cattle.
Bears included, so what do you have on your next page? You might want to mark it off so you remember.
Okay, next one. This one here is Airport.
Airport, yes. Airport has a zero in that top line, and the reason for that is they were erroneously not given any mills last year. So we'll have to add some mills. I'm going to guess about, excuse me, point five mills. District four is funded by the state. That's your next one, do you have?
District four, the nature of liability, insurance.
Okay, that from Pilt, so that's not included. What's underneath that?
Mosquito.
Okay, mosquito is a voted district, so it's not included.
And Park.
That is funded by subdivision, so that's not included. Library underneath it is? Ambulance is?
Planning Board.
Planning Board is not at this time, however, there used to be. Planning Board stopped receiving any mills when two thousand and eight hit and we started getting hit by an awful lot of subdivisions. Those subdivisions completely funded planning, so we didn't have to give it any mills. That may change if we don't have some other revenue source, so we'll have to watch that. Their goodness here, but we'll have to watch it in the future. What's next?
We've got, what is it, emergency?
Which emergency?
Twenty-two sixty.
Nope, that does not receive any mills.
For the maximum senior citizen meals.
Yep, those both do. It's a joint funding with Rocky Mountain Development, the state, and the county.
And the transportation.
Same thing. Next, I have extension, what do you want?
I have extension.
Okay, they do get mills? Public safety does get mills?
D I task force.
That's all under public safety.
That's under public safety.
Yep.
Juvenile transport.
Juvenile transport, because we don't know what that'll be, from year to year, we've set up a C I P, a capital improvement program, and we fund that out of Pilt as needed. We do infuse a little bit at the beginning of the year. So underneath that is detention, and that does get mills.
Well, it's hard to create a word, but-
That's nothing. That was just some paperwork from last year for the Delaware raise for the employees of that department.
And Museum.
Museum does, yep.
Insurance. Comes through the-
Nope, nope. There's two different kinds of health insurance. One is funded with floating mills, and the other one is a permissive mill levy, and that is set by the state.
That's just right here.
Yep, so that one does not get mills. The other health insurance does get mills.
Permissive mills gets mills.
No, permissive does not. Employee contribution to health insurance does. There you go.
Search and rescue.
Search and rescue, like detention, used to be wrapped under the public safety budget, and it was separated out last year, so they do get mills on their own. And then the General Fund is the last one.
Metal mines and hard rock.
Metal mines and hard rock hold their revenue streams for us based on mining. And it's, the formula's set with the state. That's the first one we went through, and it's here left?
Oh.
Yep. So just a couple of other little pieces for you. The County Compensation Board voted to give all employees a forty-five cent per hour raise this year. And this is something else for you employees to know is, a couple of years ago, what we were seeing is when you have people making, ones making twenty-four an hour, the others making twelve. COLA comes in and says, cost of living this year is two percent. So if you add two percent to everybody's wages, what you have is what looks like an opening alligators mouth. You have the twenty-four per hour wage earner here getting far more for COLA than the one making twelve. And when you realize what COLA is, it's the cost of a basket of goods. It's analyzed at the state and the federal level. But what's, what's to say the cost of a basket of goods costs more for a person making twenty-four hours, twenty-four dollars an hour than twelve? So what we decided a couple of years ago was, year A, we would add the COLA percent and more if we could, depending on what, what the County Compensation Board decided. And year B, we would do an average, taking the middle wage earner and applying what the COLA would be for them and making that a solid number for everybody. We haven't always been able to follow that. There's years when we frozen wages, there's years when we gave twenty cents for an increase. The County Compensation Board is made of citizens and some of the elected officials for the county. What they do is they determine what the increase is or proposed increase is, actually it is the increase, for elected officials. It is then the responsibility of the commission to decide if it's just the elected officials that'll get the raise. We have never done that, or if we're going to share that with the rest of the employees. And that is the goal this year. We did talk with County Compensation Board about that, and they are agreement that it should be shared with all employees. So we do have an official request of forty-five cents per hour, per employee as a raise for the coming year, and that is with the two point one percent COLA proposed. The other piece that the employees asked for is for the county to help pick up the increase in health insurance. That one had a hundred and four dollars in April, and what we did is we split it. County's paying sixty, employees are paying forty, so the employees have asked for us to pick up the additional forty. It might be the opposite of that.
It's the opposite.
Is it? Okay, so the county's paying forty and you guys are paying, employees are paying sixty?
The counties are paying. We requested, I believe, that the county pick up sixty and we paid forty.
Okay, all right. So, thank you for that. So that's something else we'll have to look at, if we can afford it. The other thing that needs to be mentioned in the past, and then we'll get to any questions that you have, but just bringing you up to speed, again, to the user lose it theory that we worked with in the past. What other counties do, and this has been a very positive practice, and again, it makes partners out of department heads, and it actually leads to more frugal spending for the county. When a department manages their budget in such a way that they end the year ahead, instead of taking that surplus away from them and putting it in a bucket to be given to a department that did not manage their department as wisely, what you're doing is you are, you're giving the impression of a user lose it. You better use all your money or it's going to go to somebody else. So that is something that we looked at this year, at trying to address if we could. And that'll, we'll have to play that out. But just to let you know, the different departments that have managed in such a way that they are sitting on a surplus, which we are looking at putting into a capital account or an asset account, are Weed, the Fair, the airport, even though, the library, because they're not huge amounts, but if you can add a little bit each year and reward people for good management of their accounts and budgets, then it's a good positive thing. The ambulance, senior mills and senior transport, extension, the detention center, the museum, and the General Fund, which takes in all those different departments. So I think those departments should be congratulated, and we will bring that up again if the department had been. But those are- But those are some of the things that, um, we've been advised to look at. And, uh, I guess it kinda brings you up to speed as far as, as some of the goals. What you wanna do, Franklin, is kind of read over this, formulate some questions, formulate some goals.
Yeah, and read through it with it, yeah.
Do you have any questions at this point?
I guess back to that, uh, for if I said that conversation. I don't, and Brenda's here, she can tell. That hasn't, uh, squared those salaries up for you people yet, has it?
What's that?
The, the, the salaries for you and the undersheriff and, uh, the captain. Aren't, everything's still illegal there, isn't it?
That's, I was working on that one. On that stuff.
And it's what now?
I've been working with Carla, the county attorney on that stuff. Trying to get that straightened out.
So this, this forty-five cent an hour thing right now is up in the area?
It's up to the commission when you know.
It's, it's not related. Uh, the issue with the sheriff, the undersheriff, and the captain making difference than the rest of the deputies is the result of the lack of a public safety commission. That public safety commission needs to be formulated before that can even be addressed. That has nothing to do with this commission or with the county. That commission is made up of citizens, a representative, well, no, it's seven citizens, uh, three appointed by the county, three appointed by the city, and one at large, if I'm not mistaken.
One jointly.
One jointly, thank you.
You could go with the seven or five. Either way, each has the same amount.
But that is totally separate of us. That'll be a board that essentially oversees the shares.
Go on with the budget though?
No, it's totally separate. In fact, we can't. We don't know how long that'll take.
Well, sure, expenditure that, uh...
If there's an additional expenditure, if that board were to come to us and say, "We would like to see an increase of this amount," then we would address that at the time. Uh, we would either see if there's A, money in the budget for that, or B, based on the situation, probably will get Pilt for an infusion into that. Now, that part would be up to the commission. Well, you don't have anything to act with until that commission, that board is formulated. But that is completely, totally separate. The two are, are not at all related.
We've met on that. Well, I guess with the, with the Pilt, when that's where it ha- would have to come from, whatever's gonna take place, then it'd have to come from the Pilt. At the end, right?
I, I'm at this point to say that, at that point, it would have to come from somewhere. I'm, I'm not there yet. I don't have a proposal. We don't have a commission to present a proposal. Um, so that would be a potential source, yes, but I don't think we can say in stone that it has to. Um, we have to get that commission formulated first. This is, this is a discussion that is actually for probably another day, another subject. But it's irrelevant to establishing the floating mills. Any other questions at this point?
Shouldn't look to me. I can get that figured in there, but, um, maybe, maybe we work out.
I will invite you to go and talk with the county attorney, and she can go ahead and fill you in on how the legal process for that works. Uh, Mary Alice would be another good source.
Well, yeah, see, we had that, uh, tutor for meetings, wasn't it, Brenda?
So, any other questions, um, at this point? Anything that you don't understand in reading the paperwork? Anything I can direct you to, um...
I guess the thing is, when we plug this into, on the floating mills, when we plug that in, and then it comes up, the amount of mills. So we start taking them off to a hundred and seven.
Yeah.
As it say, uh, okay, public safety. Isn't that set, isn't there thirty-seven mills for that?
It's, it's not set, no.
Or, okay, say, or maybe, maybe it's thirty-two mills you had. For some reason, I'm thinking of thirty-two. Anyway, so there, okay, there, there are thirty-two. That comes off to a hundred and seven. It's not awful.
Yes, and you do that for each one till you get to zero.
Right, right.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
But the formula to get that.
What you would take is your tax dollar amount and divide it by the, the value of a mill, which is thirteen, five, forty. And that's your number of mills. And you would do that for every single apartment.
I call it plug it in, whatever.
Yep. Yep, you're absolutely right. I, uh, take questions as soon as we're done.
Yeah, go ahead.
No, we're, we'll take questions from the public when you and I are done. We are working on the budget right now. And what I wanna make sure is that if you have any questions on how to read this, or on what formulas to use, or how to plug in, that we get that handled first, and then we'll take questions from the public.
Well, I guess we would just do that as we go through each one.
Okay, you're gonna wanna actually go through this on your own and kind of mull it over, see what's there, learn what's there. Um, so that's why I'm trying to, uh, see if you have any preliminary questions, but if not, we'll go ahead and move on to questions.
Yeah.
Alright, Cheryl, I think you were first. Please state your name for the record.
Cheryl Campbell. Did I hear you say that, that the, um, compensation board recommended forty-five cents an hour, but then I thought I heard you say two point one percent COLA increase? Is that both of them? They would get a forty-five percent increase and a two point one percent COLA increase?
I don't know. Let's put that to a vote, to vote of the employees. What do you guys think?
Okay.
No. What it is, the COLA, uh, C P I, Consumer Price Index, determines the COLA, the cost of living raise. Cost of living adjustment, pardon me. That was determined this year to be two point one percent. So what we did is we went through all the different employees for the county, and we averaged out their salaries and came up with the middle salary, salary wage. And then what we did is we determined what would two point one percent be for that middle range person? And it was forty, forty-four point something cents an hour, forty-five. So the county compensation board said, "Okay, let's go ahead and give every," well, they said, "Let's give every elected official forty-five cents per hour as their raise this year." And then, uh, the commission generally gives that to all employees, so that everybody is receiving the same, the same raise. So it's, it's not both. It's one is being used to determine the other. Does that help? Okay. Brenda, I think you were next.
Is, is it possible to get a copy of whatever you guys are looking at?
Mm-hmm.
So that, I mean, if you ask something on the way, he's, oh wait. We, as the, either department heads or elected officials can also, um,
Yep.
Be on the same sheet of.
Yes. Any other?
Can we get that for this afternoon then?
Mm-hmm.
Have we heard of?
Yeah.
Soon, not so sure.
Any other questions? Alright, um, we are done with this subject at eleven fifteen unless there's any, uh, further questions from you, Franklin? Uh, comments, observations? No?
No.
Okay. Then we will go back to our, um, agenda, and at eleven fifteen, we have the contract for county engineer, floodplain, and planning resource. We put that position out to bid not too long ago. Thank you very much for coming. And we got one response. Uh, we have been working with W W C as our past floodplain, planning, uh, and engineering resource, uh, without a contract, and that was at, uh, their gracious, um, suggestion. So we have the new contract. Again, the only one to respond was W W C. Nothing has changed. They are not, uh, asking for any kind of increase in pay for services. They, uh, the only thing that changed is the address, the contact address. So this is their, uh, contract, and we just need to, uh, vote to sign that as a matter of housekeeping. Again, we are currently working, um, with W W C without a contract, so this just solidifies everything.
This question, wasn't that brought up the other day? Is there a conflict by having, uh, Sean Hanley doing this, and he's also an M C C?
With, the contract is actually with W, W W C. Sean happens to be an engineer, an employee at W W C. Our insurance company, and, and you were here at the meeting with Greg Jackson a couple of months ago, said, "You definitely want to contract out these services because it gives you another protection should there be a lawsuit." We saw that with Roland Glenn. Roland Glenn targeted W W C and the county. We actually worked together in that jointly, and it was another layer of protection for the county citizens. Uh, so this is in keeping with that. It's, um, it's good governmental sense, it's good managerial sense, it's good fiscal sense.
Yeah, but back to my question. Does that, uh, that designation, that put him with a conflict of interest? That's all I'm concerned about, the, the legal aspects of it.
He's not an employee of ours, no. He's an employee of W W C. He's not an employee of ours. We don't pay Sean. We pay W W C.
Which is a part of.
He's an employee of W W C. This is a contract with W W C. They pay.
I'm trying to think back now, that, on the other, a couple of weeks ago, that, uh, agreement I think. I wonder, now he said he wasn't charging for that.
Deep Creek.
Right.
Yeah, restoration project.
Okay, but now, so another one comes, for example, and, and he charges. Then is there a problem?
No, no. Where, he's not an employee of ours. That's the only reason that there would be any perception of an issue. Is if he was an employee and this was his company. But neither of those is true. This is absolutely no different than contracting with the company that redid the roof. Those employees work for that roofing company. We contracted with the roofing company.
Oh, yeah, I know.
It's exactly the same.
But will we give him the, I can't remember what was in that agreement now, but we give him the authority to finally grant it like that?
Yeah.
That's my question. I just wonder, is, are we okay at, at, with that?
Yes. He's an applicant agent. That means he has our permission as the contracted county engineer, county floodplain manager, and county planning resource, all of which are encompassed in the Deep Creek Restoration Project. As that person who has that expertise, as the employee of W W C, he would be the resource we go to. That doesn't mean we're paying him. He, it would still be W W C that would submit the claim, and we pay them.
I just don't wanna get in the same situation we had with Flyner.
Flyner, uh, Mr. Flyner is a totally different situation. He was an employee of the county.
Right.
Sean Higley is not an employee of the county. You and I are employees of the county, therefore we cannot contract with the county.
Right, right.
Sean Higley is not an employee. We don't pay Sean Higley. We pay W W C.
But I guess for all this, this Flyner, he had his own companies. I know, he was drawn a separate way. Well, I guess that's why everything's all, so filed up there.
This is a whole separate issue.
I just don't wanna see this get into it. It's always, you know, I have, I, I think, Sean, the, the, our spot, I just don't wanna end up in the same predicament that we did with, uh, Flyner and his, uh, own company. See what I mean?
You're comparing Tuesday with Friday. They're two different days of the week.
Well, am I? I mean,
You know what? If you want...
I just wanna get clarified. I mean, I, I don't know who can clarify, but, but I think that's something we should have. Don't you think? We should have that.
I don't know what other, what other way to explain the differences, uh, Franklin. I don't know what else you want.
I guess I may be, get a, a legal opinion. We're okay? I, I, it's fine. We, just I wanna make sure we're okay.
May I, Chair?
Thank you.
Has not his contract gone past the county attorney?
Mm-hmm. Thanks, thanks. We've got a legal opinion already.
If we're not okay, the county attorney will come and go.
Okay, well, that's, okay. I guess that's what I was asking all the time, is... That's why I suggested legal opinion. It's already been done.
Please, Ann.
Yeah, Franklin, it, um, any contract before it comes to the commissioners for signatures, the county attorney looks at it and makes sure it's okay. So that we don't end up. I think you're feeling better about it.
Well, yeah, that's, I mean, it's not us making the decision. It's, how should I say? It's legal decision.
Right, right. You, you are making the decision, but it's, it's been vetted that it is a legal decision that you could make.
Okay. Yeah, it's basically that. You know, my roundabout talking is what I... Just, I sure don't wanna end up in that same situation. Okay, now, so what? Before I straighten so far up, where was we at again now?
We need, need to vote, uh, to approve signing a new contract with W W C. And this is for floodplain administrator, planning resource, and engineering services.
I'll make a motion to do so. And I just wondered in there, since it's been legalized by the county, or approval by the county attorney. It's flood, what is, uh, flood crane, what is, uh, what was the other services? Engineer.
They're written right on the front.
There, there's engineer, and, uh, floodplain, I think, I think there's three. I guess there's just two then, floodplain and, uh,
and planning resource.
Where at? Just let's word it in there.
Yeah, it is.
I mean, on the motion, if we wanna word it in there.
Planning resource?
Oh, planning resource, okay.
Engineering, floodplain.
Floodplain, yeah.
So is that a motion?
Mm-hmm.
Well, second motion has been moved in second, to sign the contract with W W C, engineering. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries. Nice? Please, thank you. Going up. Blank here. And whenever you, uh, have any questions about anything like that that, um, I can't answer for you, or feel free to, you know, take the agenda, look at what's coming up, and go to the different resources and ask them directly. This is coming up on Monday. Can you explain to me how this is different from the previous situation and how it works with W W C? Or what the history is, how long it's been going? Um, that way you don't have to, um, you know,
Well, yeah, just leave a letter or have a discussion, a meeting, but the...
The discussion is fine, but there needs to be a foundation so that we don't have the going around in circles that we did. Um, so at eleven thirty, do we have Doug here? Not yet. We have Doug Yellis, treasurer, insufficient fund, check fees. Would you mind? Thanks, Ann. Hey, Doug.
What I, and what I wanted to talk to you guys about was our N S F check charge. And right now, we don't have a lot of them. I think we've, I think we've only got two in the ball right now, but, uh, sometimes it's better to add. I think we've, I think we've only got two in the ball right now, but sometimes it's better to act before you... Seems like they kinda come in droves. We'll be good for a while, and then we'll get a bunch, and we'll be good for a while. But currently, we're charging fifteen dollars for an NSF check. And usually, the process we take, knowing that, that there are times when someone write a check and just, you know, paycheck doesn't go through, or there's... Extending circumstances, so usually what we'll do the first time is we'll give them just a courtesy call and tell them, "We received this NSF check. If you come in within twenty-four hours, you know, we'll waive the fifteen-dollar check fee." And that time, that gets a lot of people to come in and, you know, kind of, whoops, sorry. No harm, no foul type deal, we don't charge them for it. Then we, we have to send them a five-dollar certified letter. And we usually end up sending two of those, so that's ten dollars and dues to begin with. If the checks don't come in, then they're, we usually send them to the broker. And I'm not sure exactly what their process is up there, but I don't know. Usually when they go up there, we don't, we don't have a lot of NSF checks being paid. So, sometimes we deal with them again. We'll send them another one or two certified letters. Just in certified letters alone, a lot of times our cost is twenty dollars. So, what I was gonna do is approach you guys and see if we could raise that NSF check fee to thirty dollars, which is the maximum state allowable amount. I just think that that would make someone, if they, if they do fall out of this clause, it would probably make them think twice before they write them. A lot of these we get come from the school. There's been situations where we've had certain people that will get three or four. Just bang, 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 one after another. And, you know, most of the time, like I said, that courtesy call will alleviate that NSF check fee. But I just think if it was a little higher, it would help us defer our costs that we use. Charles just spent, I don't know how much time collecting that. It was about three-hundred-and-seventy-dollar NSF check, but it was one that we had already sent two letters on. Some of the states hadn't gotten much back from that. So we decided to start trying to collect it again, and ended up sending another two certified letters. We ended up putting them as a cash only on motor vehicles and... It was a pretty, I'm figuring out, process. I just, you know, just before, before our next batch hits, 'cause I'm sure it's coming, it's just inevitable. You know, I think if we had it up to thirty, that's what most places charge, I see. Just think it would help deter someone coming in.
Especially that courtesy call. The courtesy call, do you think that would...
I don't know of anybody else that does that.
Right, you're right.
You know, I mean, we've bent over backwards with a lot of people and, you know, trying to, trying to work with them. And sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. But, you know, if, if the courtesy call doesn't work, this last one that we collected, I think we had that NSF check for a year and a half, or two years, two years. And we had it for a long time. And, you know, it's just, it's almost like the fifteen dollars isn't any kind of a deterrent at all. It just kinda sloughed off.
And it sounds like in pursuit of the money, that other taxpayers are subsidizing that because of the cost of the certified letters and only collecting the fifteen dollars.
Right, yeah, sometimes that fifteen dollars just barely covers the certified mail, you know.
Apparently, Corey, this is, I suppose you go over thirties there, right?
Right.
I'm trying to see it here. Thirty's a match, really.